All right, friends. It is 6:00 PM. And I will now call the regular Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024 to order. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I have asked Commissioner Nelson to please lead us in the salute of our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will now ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Flowers is marked absent. Commissioner Nelson? Commissioner Rimmick? Commissioner Sheila?
Here.
Commissioner Van Duker?
Here.
Vice Chair Shishko is also marked absent. And Chair Price?
Present. Now it is time for our consent calendar. We have one item on consent, which is the minutes from September 24th, 2024 meeting. Does anyone from the commission or the public wish to pull the consent item for discussion? Seeing no debate, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion made by Commissioner Rimmick and a second made by Commissioner Van Duker. Clerk, can you call a roll call vote?
Commissioner Nelson?
I abstain due to absence.
Commissioner Rimmick?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheila?
Aye.
Commissioner, or sorry, Vice Chair Shishko?
Here.
This was to approve the minutes.
And Commissioner Van Duker?
Yes.
Thank you.
So that was a yes for me.
I'm also a yes. All right. Thank you. Next item is our public comment. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue that is not on the agenda. There will be a limit of three minutes per speaker. Is there anyone here for public comment today? No? All right. Do I still need to open and close the public comment? No. Moving on then, we are going to go right to our public hearing. That is item 5A, which is to receive a presentation on LART smog intact.
And I have to recuse myself from this item because I know the applicant and I work in the building.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll first hear a presentation by staff, followed by Commissioner questions, then we will open it up for public comment. May we please have our staff's presentation?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Commissioner Allison Bermudez.
Can I, sorry?
It's okay.
Can I ask if I have a conflict or not? The applicant has supported me financially in the past for running for council. Years ago, like 2006 and 2008, I think?
Not in the last 12 months?
No, no. Like over 10 years ago.
Have you?
15 years ago. And I haven't seen him since. I just said hello to him.
Have you recently had any communication with him?
Absolutely not. I, well, five minutes ago when I said hello to him.
You're, you're okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for checking. Good evening, Commissioner Allison Bermudez, Senior Planner in the Planning Division with this item tonight. As mentioned, this is LART smog and tag, a proposed new business going in at 6234 Greenback Lane. The proposal is to operate a what's called a smog-only test station within the, within the existing building. And smog-only test centers are vehicle locations that do smog testing, and they just do the testing. There's no repairs or anything. So if the car fails the test, they don't do the repair. You'd go somewhere else to get it repaired. So I think many of us have used this type of facility on your car registration. It says, "Go get a smog and only at a test-only location." So that's what this would do, is serve that need. In our zoning codes, smog centers such as this are considered vehicle services minor and thus requiring the use permit. So that's why we're here before you tonight. Other actions done at the facility besides the testing, they do car registration, title, transfer, vehicle identification services. So very minor-type vehicle services. As again, no repair services are at this location. Here's the aerial of the site. It's just up the street here at Greenback Lane. Faces Greenback, Auburn, Greenback come to the northwest of the site, and Dewey would be to the east. It's an existing tenant building that's just about fully leased, one vacancy. And this operation is going to carve out a niche of the existing vacant space, about 1,000 square feet, that would allow for the test-only location. So the locate, it's in the rear of the building, as shown here by that orange box. So you enter the site off of Greenback. You drive down the side of the building to the rear and access the business through the roll, existing roll-up door that's in the back. So there's nothing facing the front. The center would operate six days a week, about 8:30 to 5:00 PM daily. One or two employees, very small operation. All the service or access to the services in the rear of the building through that existing roll-up door. There's no exterior changes proposed since that door exists, and then a walk-in door also exists. They don't have to do any exterior modifications. All the changes would be interior-only through wall placement and so forth to carve out their little niche area. Each, the car, the area was serviced about one car at a time. It's very small. Cars waiting, there's plenty of room in the back for them to park and wait should he have cars waiting for services. The service takes about 10 to 15 minutes per vehicle. And then again, there's no repair, no outdoor storage of the vehicles on the site. The items before you are the recommendations to adopt the resolution determining that it's exempt from CEQA and then approve the use permit for the operation. And the applicant is here tonight, should you have any questions?
Thank you. Do we have any commissioners with questions?
Yes, Allison, do you know, is this space, I was a little bit, frankly, a little bit surprised those roll-up doors are already in the building, but anyways. Is this space set up for this vehicle to be inside the space, running during the test and exhaust fumes from, from that running?
That is correct. It would be inside this, inside the building in that space, and it would be appropriately built and constructed to allow that.
Okay. Okay, because that, if it didn't have existing exhaust, I mean, that would have to be through the roof, so that would mean?
Yeah, I don't know if the exhaust is existing or if he has to add that.
Okay.
But he could answer that if he'd like.
All right. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner questions? I just really have one about the parking situation. You had mentioned the parking in the back. I just want to verify that there is no additional parking being offered in those breezeway where the parking is meant to flow through. We don't have to worry about a backup onto Greenback as a line of customers, just stay in that. I see the applicant already saying no. Okay.
Yeah, there would be no parking in those drive aisles. It's essentially too narrow for that. It's very narrow to get back there, but there's plenty of parking in the back.
All right. Seeing no other Commissioner questions at this time, I will open up public comment. We always like to start with the applicant if they would like to say anything. Yes, please.
Is it on? This type of service is really, doesn't really require a whole lot of parking. Even people, maybe one or two, would be the best case scenario, I guess. But, and we also don't really do whole, maybe about 10 to 15 probably the cars per day. If we can do more, that's great. But, but can do a lot more because it just doesn't take that long. It's about 10 to 15 minutes per car. So things are getting easier. The air, the Department of the Automotive Repair, they keep making things easier because of the, the cars are changing rapidly how they build. Today's car, they are very efficient. They don't really produce a whole lot of pollution like older cars. So they are keeping up with the new cars. So I think for general public, it's a very simple operation.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I guess I would ask my same question. Obviously, there's roll-up doors and there's, I know there is one automotive sound company in there. But if you have a car inside, inside that bay, I don't know whether that is actually set up to run a car and direct the exhaust through the roof, or you were expecting it through the door. I'm just thinking frankly of the other tenants in proximity to that bay. I just don't know.
Right. So the bay doors are wide enough.
Right.
And then there's another side door as well. But the, during the test, the exhaust is pretty much outside already. We don't really put the whole car inside. So I don't think that will be an issue for other tenants. Yeah.
Commissioner Rimmick?
I'm familiar with the applicant's other businesses, and he's excessively meticulous and maintains an excessively professional environment. So I would be inclined to support this.
Thank you for your words.
Thank you.
All right. You can have a seat. Do we have anybody else here for the public comment portion of this item? No? With that, I will close public comment. Commissioners, do we need any deliberation, any feedback for staff today? No, not seeing a whole lot. Then I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion for this one.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. Motion to adopt Resolution 24-09 determining the project as is categorically exempt from CEQA per Section 15303, conversion of existing space of the California Environmental Quality Act, and to approve a use permit, file number PLN 24-15 to allow a portion of an existing commercial building located at 6234 Greenback Lane to be converted into a smog-test-only station, subject to the findings contained in this staff report and the attached conditions of approval.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
That was a motion made by Commissioner Rimmick and a second made by Commissioner Sheila. I will call for the vote. Roll call vote, clerk?
Chair Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Rimmick?
Aye.
Vice, oh, sorry. Vice Chair Shishko?
Aye.
And Commissioner Sheila?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Any determination by the Planning Commission may be appealed to the City Council by filing a written notice of appeal and the appropriate filing fees $250 with the city clerk not later than 10 calendar days after the date on which the determination is made. That is the end of that business. We'll move on to our public hearing this evening, which is to receive a presentation on Starbucks at Stock Ranch. Like the previous presentation, we will first hear a presentation by staff, followed by Commissioner questions, then we will open it up for public comment. We do have Commissioner Van Duker back, so it looks like we are ready. May we please receive the staff presentation?
Thank you, and good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Stephanie Louie, Assistant Planner with the Community Development Department. Tonight I will be giving a presentation on the Starbucks at Stock Ranch at 6970 Auburn Boulevard. So the project includes a request to amend the Stock Ranch Guide for Development relative to drive-through restaurants' hours of operation. It also includes an approval of the use permit for drive-through use and an approval of a design review permit for the new Starbucks at the site. The project site is located on the parcel known as Pad 7 in the Stock Ranch Special Planning Area or Stock Ranch SPA. This parcel is adjacent to Auburn Boulevard and is located within the SPA in the district known as the Auburn Commerce District. The Stock Ranch SPA is currently developed with two major box retailers to the south, which is Walmart and Costco, and commercial uses to the west of the project site. So here is the proposed site plan. The project includes the construction of a 2,305-square-foot drive-through coffee shop. It also includes landscaping and improvement plans as well as an onsite trash enclosure. The building offers approximately 750 square feet of indoor dining area with an additional 716 square feet of outdoor dining. The project meets and exceeds the minimum drive-through circulation standards, providing adequate space for vehicle stacking and queuing. This minimum stacking length is required for the aisle to ordering, which is 120 feet. The project is providing 170 feet from the entrance to the drive-through speaker box. This also is even more because the applicant is proposing a two-entry drive-through. The project design also provides adequate pedestrian connectivity by adding to the existing walkways that are prevalent throughout the Stock Ranch Plaza. So this slide shows just the entry points to the site and kind of an overview of where this is located in terms of how the Stock Ranch is currently laid out. The orange indicates entry into the site as well as possible entry to the Starbucks throughout the Stock Ranch SPA. The original proposal for the Stock Ranch SPA included an environmental study. This included a traffic analysis for the entire Stock Ranch Plaza. This also included and accounted for a drive-through use in this location. Here's a mock-up of the building elevations. The design of the building meets development standards in the Guide for Development by using a combination of accent materials such as brick, wood, and metal accents. The project also provides onsite furniture and shade structures for the outdoor patio dining area. So as stated previously, the applicant is requesting an amendment to the Stock Ranch Guide for Development. This Guide for Development sets standards and regulations for the Stock Ranch SPA. It's written in the mid-2000s, and the guide includes design standards, specific land-use designations, and limits on hours of operation. There were concerns when the guide was originally developed for onsite noise and traffic. This was particularly for the nearby residential neighborhoods that are to the north across Auburn Boulevard. This concern led to standards such as limits to one drive-through in the SPA, a required use permit review for drive-throughs, and then also restricted hours of operation. The applicant is requesting to amend the Guide for Development, drive-through hours of operation by one hour, changing the allowable opening time from 6:00 AM to 5:00 AM. And the applicant is requesting this change just to be consistent with the other Starbucks in Citrus Heights, all of which open prior to 6:00 AM. The existing limit of the hours of operation was added to the guide to address resident needs. This was done before any tenants or even the shops 11 buildings that are adjacent to the site were added in. A noise analysis was completed and included in the staff report. This confirms that the proposed drive-through operations comply with the city noise ordinance and will remain below current ambient noise levels from Auburn Boulevard. Some notable conditions of approval, these include that the applicant shall enter into an operating agreement with the city. Within that operating agreement, the tenant agrees to comply with the hours of operation requested, the trash pickup and delivery times, and the maintenance of the overall exterior appearance. And then due to the location, the applicant should also provide screening by means of a low wall and landscaping along Auburn Boulevard to mitigate the stacking area in view from the street. A long list, but these are the recommended motions, and members of staff as well as the applicant are here if you have any questions.
All right. Commissioners, what questions do we have for staff?
I have a question. Do you know if they're closing the Starbucks right down the street from that, after they opened this one?
I'm not actually sure that wasn't part of the, for this proposal, so I'm not sure what they have planned for that location.
Vice Chair?
I have a question. Can you clarify more about whenever there's some kind of development happening, typically the comments from the public, a lot of times we see that as around traffic. So there's a sounds, a lot of information about sound. What about traffic? Maybe I missed it in the report. You, has that already been done? Or what effect does this do on, on traffic? And are there any concerns with that?
Yeah, so the, when the Guide for Development was originally created, the process included that the Stock Ranch SPA included a environmental study. This included a traffic analysis and a drive-through use and as well as other uses in this area were included in that study.
Commissioner Rimmick?
On the, on the map, there was a small, little rectangular space labeled number nine. What is that?
On this one?
Have anything to do with this?
Yeah, it's the trash enclosure.
Okay, gotcha, okay. Is this a traditional Starbucks size? Do we, do we know, is this, this, is this smaller or is this?
I'm not entirely sure. Maybe the applicant can answer that.
Okay.
I think the applicant has to wait until public comment, right? Sorry, applicant.
Yeah, so sorry. We'll see.
I will defer my question until she's able to answer it. And then I also had a question in regards to the other location, which I'm assuming you might be able to enlighten us on that also. Yeah. And you had mentioned drive, that was it, that Stock Ranch only was supposed to accommodate one business with a drive-through as, for the whole site?
Correct.
Okay. And we are going to make an exception for this particular one to allow more than one?
No, this is the one.
Okay, this will be?
This will be the one, yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I also have a question. So we talked about the potential for the noise with the double lanes of this drive-through, and you talked about mitigating it with the plants or a small wall along Auburn Boulevard. What about, when this plan was built, there wasn't the new housing that's right there on the side, directly off of Carriage, I believe that is? Does this noise impact that side? And if so, do we have those same mitigations in place?
So the, the wall and the landscaping, maybe I, I was a little bit confusing on this part, but the wall and the landscaping is primarily for the, to mitigate the vehicles in the drive-through along Auburn Boulevard, just the overall stacking and the vehicles that can be viewed from there. The noise analysis accounted for the sound, for the traffic, for the drive-through, the overall, the ordering box, the noise levels of cars within their standard operations. So it accounted for just generic overall operations of the drive-through itself as a whole. And this was done for a distance requirement, and the closest distance that they measured these noise levels from was across Auburn Boulevard to that neighboring residential.
If I can, Chair Price, the, when the Stock Ranch was built, noise was looked at more holistically for the whole site, and that's when the, I think they're about eight or 10 feet tall CMU retaining walls on all sides, so that's really intended to mitigate the noise off to those sides that you described.
Thank you.
I have one more.
Yes.
In, in regards to the, this retaining wall to kind of make it so you're not seeing the drive-through from, for the residents across the street, how tall is that retaining wall?
It's a low wall, I believe it's three feet. That's kind of more to mitigate the oncoming lights into the street as well.
Yeah, because I was concerned for those, if it were taller, walls tend to bounce sound back the other way, and it would, to me, almost make more noise for them because it would bounce it back their way.
Yeah, it's a low wall.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Any other Commissioner questions at this time? Then now I will open our public comment, and we would love to start with our applicant.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Elizabeth Valerio from Valerio Architects. I'm here as a representative on behalf of Starbucks. I'm very familiar with not just their store design, but as well as most of their operational process and site design process. This is going to, we're, Starbucks is very excited for this site. It's a fantastic location. I think it's, gives the, gives everyone, or Starbucks in particular, an opportunity to really enhance the site by focusing on not just the design of the structure, but also landscaping. So we're very focused on both the design and landscaping. As people just assume that Starbucks is sort of your cookie-cutter Starbucks that lands in all different places, which is, we do have Starbucks form of design, but we do alter it according to each of the neighborhoods that we go into. So it's this type of, this Starbucks is not the same as another Starbucks in another city. We do have the same logos, color schemes and materials, but we do make individual adjustments to each neighborhood and cities. And, you know, this is one of their newer prototype designs, what we call prototype design, the designs that they're looking at, using a lot more natural materials and colors. And I think one Commissioner here had a question about the size, 2,300 square feet building is their standard size. So their standard cafe, what they call a cafe, it would be the sit-down cafe with an outdoor patio, and in this case it'll be with the drive-through, somewhere between 1,600 to 23, 2,500 is sort of the size that they look at. 2,300 is on the little bit of bigger size, but they have a smaller 751,000-square-feet walk-up Starbucks to about 25. I think we actually did a 3,000-square-feet Starbucks. That was quite a big dining room. And in, in this particular case, we want to make sure that we didn't, you know, alter or create any type of issues, let's say, with this drive-through. So we have had in the past extreme success, what we call double drive-throughs. So we have more cars stacking on the Starbucks property than having it sort of spill over to the neighboring drive aisles or parking lot, and that seems to help quite a bit. And I think one of the other Commissioners had a question about the neighboring Starbucks, whether it was staying open or closing. That I'm not 100% sure, and I don't even think Starbucks is sure if they're going to keep it open or not. One thing I do know is that when Starbucks does open a neighboring store, it's really not to close one, it's really to relieve, relieve the amount of customers in that one store. So what they're trying to do is relieve, you know, the excess parking or excess customers or drive-throughs and so forth. This sort of absorbs the demand, and it sort of diffuses any type of issues that may arise when it, when you get a popular spot. So I, that as far as I know, for many of these multiple stores per city for Starbucks. I, I could go through the whole list. I think, you know, Planner Stephanie went through the whole item quite well, so I'm here, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have. So I'm here, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Do any of my commissioners have questions for applicant? One more, yeah?
Will Starbucks own this pad?
No, they do not own this pad. It's a lease. Yes. So they don't, actually, they never own properties. They lease.
You're not McDonald's?
No. So this will be a ground, what they call ground-up lease.
Perfect.
So they'll do the site work and the building work.
More of just a comment. My main question was about the other location too. I just wanted to say I appreciate the artwork on the outside of the building with the leaf pattern. I think that's pretty neat.
Thank you. No, we've been trying to do that in a lot of locations where rather than having a blank wall, we would hire local artists to paint murals that sort of resemble or signify anything interesting in the community that's, you know. So that's one thing Starbucks does quite well and we've been doing that all throughout, you know, the newer Starbucks that's been, you know, we've been trying to open up. And this is not a mural per se, but it's quite an interesting artwork that it's sort of blazed into, etched into this material. So yeah, thank you.
I will ditto that. Having the natural design at the nature preserve is pretty neat. Also, in regards to that second location, that's right by my house and the traffic in that drive-through is insane and blocks parking to Hayao Sushi, which is my favorite place in town. So I'm very eager to keep the Stock Ranch traffic down at Stock Ranch and not push it towards Sylvan Corners during school drop-off time. So thank you. With that, you can have a seat.
Great, thank you.
Do we have anybody else here for public comment on this item? Seeing a whole lot of head nods, I'm going to close the public comment. Commissioners, do we need any deliberation on this?
I just wanted to say, I was reading through as Commissioner Shishko talked about the quite extensive discussion about sound, that the ordering system in terms of sensing ambient noise and adjusting the volume and also the commitments to basically monitoring the site for car radio operations, I think that's going to be rather interesting. And also frankly, just keeping the site under control, the commitment, you know, to even hiring security if necessary to manage the outside area. So I, to assure the public, I think there's a lot of controls that are potentially there to address all situations. So I support the project.
Any other comments from my fellow commissioners?
I'll just say one comment. I support it too and I think it's great that the drive-through window is on the west-north side because the last Starbucks we approved, the drive-through window was on the east side and it would blind the baristas in the morning when we were trying to pay. So I think that's a good layout, that's all.
I would just like to say thank you. It's been, Stock Ranch has taken so long to develop. I've just, as a long-term resident, watching the dirt bikes race around Stock Ranch back in the day with the built-up little ramps and stuff like that because it was a big, huge field for the longest time. It's nice to see it's starting to get some attention and I think the addition of Starbucks will probably encourage some other build-outs to start happening. So it's a great improvement. Thank you so much.
All right. Well then, at this time, I think I will ask for a motion.
I might just add, if whoever's making the motion would like to not have verbal throw-up, you can just say, I move one, motions one, two, and three. That'd be sufficient. Yeah, sorry, I missed you last time.
I'd like to make a motion for us to, I move for motions one, two, and three, for us to adopt motions one, two, and three.
I'll second.
I have a motion that has been made by Vice Chair Shishko, seconded by Commissioner Van Duker. I will call for a roll call vote.
Chair Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Remick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheeler?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shishko?
Aye.
And Commissioner Van Duker?
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion passes. "Any determination by the planning commission may be appealed to the city council by filing a written notice of appeal and the appropriate filing fees, $250, with the city clerk not later than 10 calendar days after the date on which the determination is made." That is the end of that business. Item six is our general correspondence, presentation, and reports from city staff. So we will now receive our reports from city staff.
Yeah, good evening, commission. Just a couple of things here. It is election season, believe it or not, and that means that some of you, your appointments are coming towards the end of your term. We obviously enjoy having you and hope that you'll consider, when you hear from our city clerk requesting applications again, you'll consider throwing your hat in the ring again to continue for those of you who haven't termed out and so forth. So I encourage you to keep an eye out for that and continue helping the city grow. The second thing, there's been a lot of news out there related to the Sunrise Tomorrow Plan and the proposal from Ethan Conrad Properties to amend the plan and that is going to be considered by our city council. It's not a formal application per se. It's kind of an early review and provide feedback application. So that will be going directly to the council and that will be considered by them on November 13th. Obviously, you are all stakeholders and most of you were here when that plan was developed and saw what went into that. So you're welcome to participate that as you would as a citizen. So if you have any questions about that, happy to talk to you offline.
Thank you, Casey. Any other correspondence, presentations, or reports?
And forgive me, if you do choose to participate in that meeting, I would just like to remind you you're participating as a property owner and not as a planning commissioner.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other reports? No? Then, Commission Secretary, what is our next item?
Adjournment.
My favorite. We have reached the end of our meeting. Thank you and this meeting is now adjourned at 6:37 p.m.